Go ahead and get started. The work session of the Windsor Heights City Council will come to order. Eight twenty-eight, roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Here.
Joseph Jones. Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Here.
And Teresa Arms.
Here.
Dennis. I believe we have a gentleman on line, don't we?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the council had the privilege of listening to Peter explain the first compensation study that he produced for the city for the Public Safety Department. And the council has since received the second report on the administrative positions and the Public Works Department. So Peter is here this evening to give you a presentation on that report and to answer any questions that you might have. And then the council is to discuss and set next steps. Peter?
Thank you. Good evening to everybody. If you have the report in front of you, some of the pieces of the report are similar to what you saw previously. So I will just reference you to the pages that are relevant to this report. So if you turn to page ten, because all of the economic data that you saw in the Public Safety Report is similar preamble. And page ten, we start to describe how we approach this study. On this study, we chose to run two different competitor groups. We chose to have a option A, so to say, a group A, that was composed of the same competitors that were in the previously conducted Public Safety Survey. And then we chose to run a group B or option B, and all of those are listed in your appendix B. The reason we did that is because the public safety jobs, and you kind of heard some of that from Chief McCluskey before, when he was talking about his collective bargaining agreement. You have a similarity in duties and responsibilities and workforces being managed. So there's a, there's a very much of a symmetry between police and fire across jurisdictions, which makes your competitive environment more equal. When it comes to these jobs, and again, we're comparing jobs to jobs. You don't necessarily have that kind of symmetry. You may have administrative jobs, as Mr. Durham referred to them as, that may be different in other jurisdictions. They may have more responsibilities. They may have more scopes. They may have elements that they manage that are not similar to those at Windsor Heights. So we felt that we should provide you with these two groups to give you a better perspective on the environment. When you look at the numbers, there isn't that much of a noticeable change. It's more from a compensation philosophy to give you, again, as much information as possible when you look at a appropriate compensation information and therefore the decisions that you have to make for those. I just wanted to explain that on page ten. You start to see similarities with your last report, starting with page eleven. We looked at the salary structure rates for those competitors, again, breaking them out between that option A and option B group, so that you have a good look at what the differences are between those two. And then on page twelve, you see the same kind of breakout. This would be for option A, looking at the city incumbent salary rate compared to do two different metrics. The labor market average salary rates and the labor market midpoint rates for ranges, similar to what we did for you on the Public Safety. And then on page thirteen, we did the same thing for the option B group, given, again, giving you more info, giving you different data cuts, so that you could see what those comparators are between the two. Page fourteen is the same medical information from those same entities, same with page fifteen with the paid time off. So when we get down to the recommendations, first of all, as I stated before, our recommendation in creating those structures and is, if you go actually to page twenty, I'm sorry, is to use that option B group. We believe with these jobs, as they are described with those entities and their jobs, that the option B group is a more logical competitor group. That competitor group has plus or minus forty percent on their range spreads. So therefore, we're using that logic to construct the ranges, again, very similar to what we illustrated for you on the Public Safety. So we took those option B midpoints of those ranges for competitors, and we created a forty percent spread. You can see that on page twenty. And therefore, on page twenty-one, to give you, again, different perspectives, as we did in Public Safety, we took the actual incumbents versus the recommended salary range midpoint and with their comp ratio, in other words, what their difference from that midpoint would be. And on page twenty-two, where we would recommend, based on time and service in the position, in the position that they have at Windsor Heights, what we would recommend minimally as a comp ratio that they should have in comparison with that midpoint. And then on the far right column, what the difference in compensation would be between their present compensation and bringing them to that comp ratio that we would recommend on that new salary midpoint of the range. We gave you some other options, some other information that you could, you could examine. And that being in page twenty-three and twenty-four, what if we used a two-year period to allow you to be able to catch those folks up to market? Page twenty-three, at a minimum, we would want to bring those folks up that are below the minimum of the new ranges to minimum. And so legally, they're at least be paid the minimum of that range. That is the chart that you see illustrated on page twenty-three. And on page twenty-four, you would see the finality of bringing them up to that comp ratio within a two-year period. And you see the second year cost and a total first year and second year cost. The first year total cost being at the bottom of your chart on page twenty-three. Those are recommendations. You will have to, first of all, determine what your compensation philosophy is going to be, as you did with your previous group, and then what your decision is going to be after you determine that philosophy and that strategy as to how you're going to position your folks. But we want to give you as much information as we possibly could, cut the data in different ways to give you different perspectives to allow you more ability to have conversations in that regard.
Questions, comments for Peter?
Peter, so when you're talking about the market rate, you're talking about the participating cities and the appendices, is that right?
You are correct.
So in determining these rates, if, I'll just, I'll focus in on one, I'll just say city clerk. So the market rate was then determined from looking at four different cities, that being Clive, Johnston, Newton, and Urbandale.
Correct.
And they have an average population of about twenty-four thousand people. That's not a question for you, that's just a statement. My question for you is, when you determine these rates and their inclusion in the market rate, were duties and responsibilities of the positions considered?
Yes, that's, we compare job description to job description. So we look in a, in a comparability of the position to the position that is employed by those entities. If the position is not similar, if the status is not similar, the scope is not similar. So for example, you could have a position that may have a certain title in another jurisdiction, but they do more or they do less than they would your position at Windsor Heights. And if it is not, if it is of a significant nature, then that would not be comparable, and we would not include that in the analysis.
So on that note, I mean, looking at Johnston, you see their, their city clerk has a midpoint of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I looked, and that's because they aren't just the city clerk, they're also, they have a title. I don't understand what it is, but it's called Director of Internal Operations. And then you look at Urbandale, who I would say, despite the size of the city, has a relatively modest, you know, midpoint. And that's because the Urbandale city clerk is apparently just the city clerk. They do the job that is laid out in the Iowa code. They don't have a financial or a secondary job title, as far as I understand from what it says on their website. So the question, and you're answering it, is, is that those, those, those factors were considered in you making this, presenting this data?
We do, and we look at the reason for being of the position as well. Because some jurisdictions, we run into this all across the United States. Different entities may have different ways of organizing that is different from statute, because they're given that ability. So they may have positions that have a statutory responsibility. However, they, in their jurisdiction, due to their regulatory delineation, they may be able to delegate it to a different kind of position, where the reason for being for the position isn't as pure as, let's say, city clerk, director of public works, fire chief, et cetera. Then we have to take those into consideration. But where the, the reason for being for the position and the majority of the duties and responsibilities for it are comparable, then we have to say that that is a comparable position.
If there isn't, in the appendix, if there isn't a minimum, a midpoint, or a maximum, does that mean that we weren't provided the data, or they didn't, they don't have that position, or what, what does that mean?
That means that they did not have a position similar to yours, or yes, they did not provide us with the data, correct?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess, kind of going along with what Mr. Jones has been talking about. I'm just a little, you know, kind of going through here and looking at the positions and even how many people, let's say, in the Public Works Director, like the Altoona Public Works Director, he's got about fifteen staff below him with two other supervisors below him. We do the same thing basically with Clive. Johnston, I don't know how many people work there, but they deal with grinder pumps, pump stations, storm sewers. They have a hundred and six miles of streets. And then there's at least two supervisors underneath the Public Works Director. So how did we, how did we look at these cities and say that they were kind of doing the same job that our Public Works Director is?
Again, when we're looking at jobs, we're looking at the responsibilities and duties. We're not looking at scope, we're not looking at volume. Because from a competitor standpoint, we're looking at what the comparability is the job to the other. You're going to have jurisdictions that are going to have more workforce. They're, they may even have different management levels than others. But is the reason for being that position of having the responsibility of being the director of public works for that jurisdiction in comparable duties, not in volume, not in workload, not in staffing? You saw that somewhat in Public Safety Report, where you're going to have competitors, and they will be your competitors, who are not similar to your jurisdiction in funding, in manpower, in jurisdictional breadth, et cetera. But par for par, when you're comparing the jobs for traction and retention purposes, they will be sources of labor competitiveness. So yes, you're going to have differences in directors of public works, just like you're going to have differences in directors of finance and city clerk. And so we're giving you the data of those whose jurisdictions, that is their primary responsibility, that is similar to yours, to give you the data to then, for you to make the decision how you're going to position them, taking into account your philosophy, your strategy, your workforce, your priorities as you lay down for those positions, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Peter, how do we figure that out? How do we figure out as far as, because I think that's sort of what we're here. That's sort of, you know, the thing that it's hard for me, and I'm just one person, but it's hard for me to justify saying that, you know, this person working in our tiny town should make a comparable salary to this person working in this massive town, when we're not only talking massive, but in size of population, but also in square, you know, square mileage, the size, a literal size. So how do we figure that out? Or can we not figure it out? And I mean, you're just saying to us, or I'm not saying you're making that argument, but these are the comparable rates. This is what the market calls for, and so if, you know, this is, this is what these people should be paid, because this is what other people are paid.
No, I'm not saying that, and thank you for asking that question. One disadvantage you have going into this exercise is you really don't have a structure. You don't have a compensation philosophy. And we run into jurisdictions either because, and again, could have, should have, what have. You can't fix the past, we don't have a time machine, so it's not your fault. You're actually trying to deal with the issue right now. We run into jurisdictions all the time that have that issue, where it's either a leftover issue or something that was neglected. So that's a disadvantage you have, is that you don't have a structure. You're trying to do that, you're trying to attract and retain talent, you're trying to do that. The problem is, you need to find out where you are first, before you can find out where you're going to go. So, you know, any, any exit on the freeway is fine if you don't know exactly where you're going to go. So having this information and having a discussion of, yes, as you can tell from the data, your folks are at a distance from where those jurisdictions are. So what do you want to do? First of all, are you not convinced that those are the competitors that you want to compare to? If not, then who and why and how? Because again, you'll be building this compensation philosophy for use in the future. Then, after you've determined that, then where do you want to bring your people for attraction retention purposes? If the gap is too big, are you going to have to do it over stages? But before you determine that, where do you want to bring them to attract and retain? You always have the option, and I am not in any way being disrespectful or anything, I'm just being totally open here. You also have the option of doing nothing and saying, we can't afford to do this. We're just going to continue to do those increases, and you know, we'll go with it, what it is. It has pluses and minuses to it, as with any, any action you're going to take in the labor market. So I'm trying to provide you the info, but the issue is that you are the decision makers. You are the individuals who not only have to determine, now that you know where your folks are, what you want to do or not do, but more importantly, to move in the future. Because the labor market's not going to stand still, it's not going to wait for anybody. Supply and demand isn't going to get better, and competitiveness is not going to get any worse. So this would be a time to make that decision and then plot for the future how you want to proceed to maintain whatever philosophy, structure, and strategy that you devise, so that you can, the key is so that you can continue to attract and retain talent. That's the key. So this information is to provide you a guideway for you to be able to make those decisions. I am not in any way, shape, or form, and I know you didn't say this, but I'm just saying, I know that I'm not telling you you have to pay these people a certain amount. I'm giving you some recommendations just based upon what if we were to bring them up to the market of those two, of the competitor group, and try to get them within a margin of the market, and then be able to continue to track them from that point, to just give you information, to give you some kind of position that you can have that decision and start taking action. But I'm cognizant of the fact that, you know, your folks are not exactly in an enviable spot as far as the distance between them and the market, and you also don't have all the money in the world. Your taxpayer, you're responsible to your taxpayers and to your constituents for being responsible stewards of those funds. But at the same time, you've got to make sure, because you are in a service, you provide a service. To provide that service, you need people, and fully eighty percent of your budget, more or less, is going to be people. So it's going to be critical to make sure that you have the right people in the right place to provide the right service to, to the city's residences. So that's the best way I can explain it.
Peter, Peter, if I could ask a question and an observation, I would appreciate you addressing it. One is that has been important to me as I've been been in roles, and I've hired a lot of people, is span of control. And I think that's a major that is pretty important. If I'm chief of police and have fourteen officers versus I have whatever Des Moines has, and I don't know what it is, but the point is, I think that is a variable. And the, I'm always curious about the cities that did not respond to a survey, as some of the cities did not, for whatever reason, but I kind of like a follow-up on those cities. And we can do it on our own, I suppose. But there's always that, in research, you usually do a follow-up with those that didn't respond. And, and I don't see that here. So I'm not questioning the methodology or the data that was provided, but I think there are some variables that aren't being considered. And, and you're right, it depends on the circumstances of the individual organization. This city of Windsor Heights does not have a lot of growth potential, and that's certainly a factor. So part of what has to be decided with the city council and is, they're tough decisions, is you know, our pay levels is important, and we've got great people. I have no, no no problems with any of the people we have in these leadership positions or any of the staff. I think they're tremendous, and I applaud them whenever I can. But I think in retrospect, we've got one way, I, this is the only way I see, because we don't have a lot of economic development, is that, or any, as far as I can see. But the only way to counterbalance some wage increases in my mind is reduction of staff. And that's not always popular either, because no one likes to have to do that as a, as a leadership person to reduce staff. But, you know, there's only so much, so much you can get out of a, of a turnip. And when it's dry, it's dry. And so so we have some unique circumstances that the other cities that you're using as comparable examples not have the same issues that we have here.
Yeah, let me address, if I can address your, your two issues.
Can you just finish one more thing?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought you were done, sorry.
I would say, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else but Windsor Heights. It's a great community, wonderful residents, and the taxes are high here, and the county that we're in are very extremely high, as is. And so you can only squeeze things so much until you can't squeeze it anymore. And so that's the circumstances I think we're in as a city. And, and so no one likes to face up to that there needs to be some reduction of staff or some having services go elsewhere because we can't afford the, to have them any longer. So I think there's those things which don't, don't, it's not part of your, your study, I realize. But there's a lot of factors here that's different than a community or a municipality that is growing. And so we're very unique. And so I think that needs to be a variable or a constant in our case as we consider things. I'm done.
So yeah, let me address your second part first, then your first part second. Second part is, we could have jurisdictions who do reply to us, but they don't have formal salary ranges. So if they reported to us, they have the job, but they don't have a formal salary range. Therefore, we're not going to have formal salary range data to put on the chart, because they don't have one, for whatever reason they've chosen. Either they don't have a formal compensation system or don't feel the need to have that. The issue you brought up about scope is why every organization, doesn't matter how small or large you are, has to have a compensation philosophy, because that philosophy is going to state where you're going to bench to market. So if you determine that you have less scope, if you determine that you have less jurisdictional resources, et cetera, knowing what the market is, then you're going to set a percentage to market that you're going to bench yourself. And actually, that's addressed in the issue of having a philosophy. Everybody has to do that, whether your target three M or Pete's Emporium that employs four or five people. So once you know what the market rate is, then you will decide based on your jurisdiction, based on things that you brought up, like your financial resources, your growth, your traction and retention issues, et cetera, where you're going to position yourself to market, therefore creating your system from that point and being able to track the market from that point. And that's what every organization does, regardless of size, industry, jurisdiction, et cetera. So that's again, another decision you're going to have to make when you set that philosophy, is if you believe that you shouldn't be at market, because in group A, let's say, you have these other jurisdictions, or group B, you have these jurisdictions that you believe you are not of that size, then what percentage are you going to situate yourself from those competitors and then create a compensation system to attract and retain at that point, then able to benchmark in the future, knowing what your separation percentage is? Because that's the key, you're not only going to bench now, you want to continue to monitor your success at being able to track the market at that percentage that you decided you wanted to have in benchmarking your folks, because you've got to track the market. Otherwise, you're going to be faced with a situation very similar now, where, you know, you don't know where you are in relation to the market. You don't know if you're paying.
Peter, I'm not saying that. No, I'm not saying that. But I do like what you're talking about, having a, a philosophy in terms of staffing and compensation along with that staffing. But we are very unique, and so, but I, I I like the idea of establishing a philosophy with regard to our staff and filling vacancies within our, our staff. So we're hiring, or how many people we can have, or what, what, what's the limitation we have on how much personnel cost we can have? And so, yeah, I think there's some, some really good points that you're bringing up. But I I think there are, there's a lack of comparability with the cities that have, were compared to in this study. And that doesn't negate having the philosophy and the market is the market. So yeah, so we, and I suppose it's true at our largest city, the Des Moines, city of Des Moines, versus the smallest one, which is by, which is us by far, of the reporting cities have to make their own way and, and figure out your strengths and your philosophy. And, and I agree with that, because there's, there's limitations on what we can do. So I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but we are in pretty, a unique situation.
Now, how, how would you suggest we go about developing this philosophy? Because it seems like we need to have some sort of plan to come, to, to move forward here. But I'm not exactly sure how we start the, the philosophy. How do we look at this and say, we don't, we don't think that, you know, the minimum midpoint maximum is where we want to be, but we also know that our employees work hard. We like our employees. But we also are not bringing, you know, we, we don't have the money tree out back. So we kind of have to, to look at the financials as, as well, and balance the, the finances along with, you know, retaining employees on top of, we have to make sure that this is sustainable. We're, we're not just looking at, you know, this year and the next two years, and then, you know, a new council might come in, and then it's their problem, you know, we kind of have You know, we kind of have to look a little bit further down the line and make sure that we are able to sustain all of these increases and all of these, you know, salaries basically for as long as we're Windsor Heights or as long as we have public works and, and fire department and police department, you know? So how do we start this?
Well, the good news is you already started. A lot of the questions that you've asked tonight, a lot of the issues that you brought up tonight, a lot of the perspectives. These are exactly the kinds of things that you have to mull over. Again, you know, what, where do you want to be in comparison? Where do you see yourself in comparison? What fiscal resources do you have? Because you know that they're not unlimited. How long will it take you to get to that place that you want to be? I think a lot of the questions you've asked tonight are very good and they would be what you should start asking yourselves to be able to get to the point of where do we see ourselves in comparison to that market? How, where do we feel comfortable in identifying that number? And once we've identified that number, then what are the implications of that number? Not only now, but moving in the future. How long are we going to take to be able to transition? Because you're absolutely 100,000% correct. You, like everyone else, when you're doing this, you're doing a good thing, but you now found out what that gap is. Once you define where you want to be, there's still going to be a gap. How long is it going to take us to make up that gap? And, and where do we see the success in reaching the point where we can say, okay, where, where we want to be? While still trying to attract and retain talent? That, all of these things you've discussed tonight is the way to get at that. So that you guys can all create that framework to then determine what your compensation system should look like.
Peter, I'd like to add one more thing if I might. And I've done a lot of research on, on personnel issues over my working time. And I remember a study and it was pretty memorable to me. It was about satisfiers and dissatisfiers. And certainly there's a difference because some of the affective areas are very important to people. I mean, you've got to have a living wage and, you know, but the affective things about the quality of your role and the quality of your supervisors and your coworkers and those kinds of things that I feel good going to my job every day. And I, I feel respected and they know my name and those kinds of things. And a dissatisfier is that you can't provide a, a, a good wage for your family and benefits. Then that it's, it's, it's certainly a dissatisfier. But satisfying is not necessarily just your wage. And it's, the research will tell you that there's many more intrinsic satisfiers than there are just the extrinsic paycheck. You know, they're obviously needed. A living wage and a, a good wage. And the benefits that go with it for your family and for yourself. But I, I don't want to select, let loose of the quality things that provide satisfaction for people. Cause I've heard it. I really like it here as an employee. Because you know my name. And it's a nice place to work. And, and so, and as opposed to Des Moines, for example, or even a bigger city is, you know, you're, I was talking to one of the city engineers from Des Moines, retired city from Des Moines. They have said, I don't, I don't know how many engineers we had, but it was well over a hundred. And, and, and he said he went home every night and had a hard time sleeping because he was just stressed out. And so those are the, the satisfiers that I'm speaking of about a place like Windsor Heights versus a, a more pressurized situation. And that's what this Des Moines engineer was talking about. And he, I, I won't elaborate on the other things he, he told me in terms of that. I'm sure he made more money. But he's can sleep at nights and so I don't think you want to discount the intrinsic rewards that people get.
Yeah, if I may, I've been doing this for 35 years and I've never, ever seen a survey where compensation is at the top of the list. Why do people leave an organization? So I agree with you there. And I agree with you that people will take jobs for less money for environments where they feel more akin to supervision, scope, et cetera. What I can tell you as a compensation person though, is gap compensation is always the straw that broke somebody's back. So again, if I'm Pete's Emporium and I'm competing with Target and there's no way I'm gonna, I'm gonna, a comparable to Target. But we're competing for the same talent to come in the door. And I find out they're paying 15 and I'm paying 10, $5 gap. That's a big gap. That buys groceries, that puts gas in the tank. That pays the rent. So yes, people will make employment decisions based on a variety of factors of which compensation is one. The question again, putting your compensation philosophy together is, are you comfortable being at the lower end of that from a re-ta- attraction and retention standpoint? If you are, there's absolutely nothing wrong having a compensation philosophy saying you're going to pay below market. That's acceptable. But you have to accept the consequences of that because compensation is one of the elements of the employment contract. And it is something that your prospective employees and your current employees will look in different ways at different phases of their employment relationship with you.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not discounting the wage part of it. But I, I just think it needs to be a balance between the two. You know, you can get to a real stressful job, the CEO of Fortune 500 company and make the kinds of money. If you can get to that level versus somebody that's very happy and makes a lesser wage. And so that's an exaggeration, but it's, it's, it's what somebody wants and what somebody needs. I mean, the, the, the fringe benefits here are comparable to anywhere else. So that part, we're, I think we're really solid on from what I've been able to compare.
Mike, you muted yourself. You muted yourself. You got too comfortable.
Recliner. But anyway, I, I think there, there's a point where, and I was in education that I wasn't going to be making a million dollars a year. But I made a good wage and I liked what I was doing. I felt good about what I accomplished. And, and I could have done it longer. So I'm kind of preaching here, but I just think there's a whole, whole sphere of of reasons why people take jobs and why they stay in the same job. Or if there's a promotion available, move up. So not disagreeing with you. You know, you've got to make enough money to, to satisfy your, your needs for sure. I think maybe we're on the same page, Peter. Am I still muted? Okay.
No, you're not muted.
Okay. I'm just saying to Peter, I think we're on the same page.
Mr. Mayor. I think that the, I'm trying to stay out of this because it's good to have this discussion, but I, I think we're, I'm, I'm sensing there's a lull here on where's the next step and what's the next thing we're going to do? And it sounds, Peter, like what you're saying is, here's the basis. I've given you all the data. I, I've shown you where you stand in terms of relating to the metro area. But the next step really is the council has to put this philosophy together and say, here's who we are. And who's who, who's who we want to be. And I, I think it is going to be difficult for some to get to that point because there's some truths that need to be identified here. And it's fine. I think the only way to make progress here is to identify those truths and, and move forward. Peter, I'm, I guess I'm looking at you to say, here's how communities that you've worked with in the past come to this truth or this philosophy. Do you survey everybody? Do you give everybody the chance to say, here's what I, I think our city should look like in terms of our employee base?
Yeah, mostly when I dealt with, you know, when the public sector is, they'll approach it one or two ways. They'll have, and again, I don't know your jurisdiction and your bylaws and stuff. They may have some kind of work session or some kind of, I don't want to use word retreat or some kind of meeting where they can sit in accordance with whatever your regulations and codes and stuff are and have a brainstorming session, just exactly kind of like what you were alluding to. What's my perspective? Where do I think we would be if we had a successful program? And then have that discussion amongst yourselves. I've seen a lot of jurisdictions who do that. Again, who are in your situation where they may be starting from scratch, either because previous, previous councils, et cetera. Didn't do anything or those plans were outdated or all of the above. Some may do it in a public session. Some may direct staff to come up with different avenues. You know, I've seen all those different approaches to get to a consensus compensation philosophy to then be able to move forward as an organization. Does that help?
Yeah.
Comments?
Dennis, I think your microphone's off. There you go.
Would the council like me to pursue that? Would they like me to head down the road of developing this policy or this picture of what the council sees as the city of Windsor Heights as an employer?
Dennis, I think that's wise, but I think it's also wise to have a, at least a 10-year vision of what the city, we want the city to be. Compensation certainly is a part of it, but what we want the city to be in 10 years or 15 years. Because things are changing rapidly in a lot of ways. And demographics are changing. There's a lot, there's a lot of change going on. And, and so I think it'd be nice to, and I would like to be on a committee, whether I'm a councilperson or a citizen here to help establish a vision like the 2031 vision. And, or the 2041 or whatever it be. We've done it before and different organizations I've been a part of. And it's saying essentially, you're thinking out of the box, there's no restraints. You're not worried about money or anything like that at that point. But where do you want to be at the end of that 10 or 20-year period? As a city. And so I think that's, to me, a really good starting point. Or, you know, it, it doesn't handle what we're dealing with right now and that, that needs to be handled. And, and so I, I would say, yeah, go ahead and, and start working on the, 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 the staffing philosophy as, as Peter calls it.
Like a comprehensive plan for staffing? Because the comprehensive plan back in 2017 really didn't talk anything about that.
So it wasn't intended to be, Mike.
Well, I think we need to, I think Dennis is absolutely correct that if we're going to continue to want to compete with people, I think honestly, I think we're going to price ourselves out of some things. And so I think it would be very proactive to have the conversation about, you know, what the future for the employment aspect looks like long-term. And so Dennis, I think that is an excellent idea and I would endorse that, that step.
Dennis, could I have you repeat what you said you were going to do? The, the dogs walked through and I kind of got sidetracked, so I apologize. Kind of sparkle in the room, I guess. So can you just, I, I heard everybody else is talking, but I just want to make sure that I understand what you said that you were going to do.
I think from what we've heard from Peter, that you can't take the next step or, or decide on anything until you have a philosophy developed and agreed upon that says, here's how the city of Windsor Heights is going to operate in terms of employee compensation. And here I'll throw out an example so that I can further explain this. When, when a municipality says we're going to be an employer of choice, are you serious about that? Are you not serious about that? And what I mean by that is if you're going to say, we're going to attract the best and the brightest from all over and we're going to pay them what the best and the brightest is, deserves to be paid. That's one thing. But if you say, we know that we're a small community and we know that we can't afford to compete with the West Des Moines of the world. But we do know that our people are going to look to leave here and go to West Des Moines. So here's how we position ourselves in relation to West Des Moines so that it's difficult for our people to leave and go there, the better place. Does that make sense? And that's just one aspect of this policy that you would put together or this philosophy.
I think that, that makes perfect sense. And I think that you're, you're spot on with what you just said about how we kind of, I don't want to call us a stepping stone, but I think kind of we're a stepping stone in, in some ways. So I, I think that that's a good, good start for us.
Reece? So any comments?
Um, I, I'm okay with that approach. I, I think to Dennis's point, the question is, what is your, what, where, what is our position? What's our philosophy? What do we want to see ourselves as, or how, where do we see ourselves in the city? One of the things, and as I've looked at the report and, and listened to the conversation this evening is whether you look at, you have to, I, I want to look at it holistically from the whole package. And you guys have heard me talk about this before. Everything from, you know, your paid time off to considering your, you know, the healthcare component and all of those sorts of things, that all of those things need to be part of a broader conversation. And I appreciate the conversation, the conversation about what are, what else is great about working in Windsor Heights, right? And so, and, and are you valued? And because there, because there are those non-tangible components as well, the kind of the greater wellbeing. So I'm, I'm okay looking, taking as that as our next step and, and figuring out how do we, how do we move forward?
Joseph? Comments?
Yeah, I'm okay with that step too. I think that there's, there's something to be said about intrinsic rewards, but there's also something to be said about being competitive as a employer. And I think we need to be able to do both. So I like the, what Dennis has proposed doing moving forward, but I think we need to, we need to come up with a, a philosophy of how we want to, to plan to do this so we can have a sense of what we're, what we're doing for our employees and our future employees.
Thank you. Dennis?
Okay, we'll get to work on something like that. And, but I think it's going to be input intensive by the council. And, and I, and when I met, when I was referring to truths before, we have some recent actual history that we can point to. We lost a public works employee who specifically said, here are the reasons why I'm leaving. And they were, they were compensation oriented and their PTO was higher. Their medical cover, their fringe benefits were better. So when I say that we have to face some truths, maybe by gut, years ago, you thought that the city of Windsor Heights was the best when it came to fringe benefits. But maybe that's not the case today. And we have to face that fact and we have to prepare a philosophy that says, here's how this is going to help us be competitive. And it may, might not be wages all the time. So that's my two cents, but we'll get to work on that. And I'll, I'll draw something up that the council can get and then discuss where they want to go from there. Is that fair?
Yes. Sounds very good.
And, and the process of formulating that Dennis, it's, I think you said it's going to be very council, you know, input oriented. So if, you know, leading up to these discussions, if you will have already asked for our input maybe, so we have a greater idea of going into the discussion. You know, sort of what we're, what we're going to be talking about or, or where, you know, sort of not, not everybody stands, but maybe the council, you know, vaguely. Cause I don't want to violate open meetings laws is what I'm trying to say. So we just have an idea of what our conversation is going to be beforehand and maybe where some people are at. I think that would be very fruitful or helpful as well in guiding the discussion.
Well, the thing, first thing that comes to my mind is, and Aaron, if you're still on the, on the Well, the thing, first thing that comes to my mind is, and Aaron, if you're still on the meeting, can you jump in on this? But if we were to prepare a written survey that could be filled out to help us kind of mold this philosophy, Aaron, is that something that's doable? Or is that dancing around an open meetings violation?
So, you could do a survey, as long as all of the responses came back to you, and then there was no discussion from there of the results, except in an open meeting or an otherwise exempt meeting. So, it just couldn't be, you couldn't be the hub then to disseminate the opinions that you received from everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Dennis, Dennis, I would consider this as an option, too, is bringing in a facilitator. I remember we did that when we were doing goal setting. I thought it was pretty effective. We haven't done that since. I think it was like my first year on the council. And so, I think you could possibly have somebody facilitate a discussion about what our philosophy is, or we want it to be. And maybe you're capable of doing that. I'm not saying you're not. But you're kind of a part of the whole thing. And so, that's a possibility to consider, is all I'm saying.
Okay. I'm also cognizant of the time constraints we have here, too. We want to have something that we can have done before the end of the fiscal year, so that we're not leading all of our employees on down into the fall without any idea about what they can look forward to in terms of raises for the next fiscal year. But I think that we can kind of handle this internally. I also would suggest that maybe we should hear from the employees and what their survey responses might be to certain things.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. I think the more information you gather, the better.
Peter, before we let you go, is there anything else that you could provide, like words of wisdom on the steps that we're about to face?
I don't know the winning Powerball numbers, so I'm out of luck there. I did, Dennis, just send you some stuff, and I'll look for some more stuff to help you guys. I've got some good guides and references, so I will tomorrow morning go through and see if I can find some more stuff to help you. You are correct, it's a conversation. And actually, you know, you mentioned exit interviews there. It wouldn't be a bad idea to just have a short, painless little survey and just ask people anonymously, your staff, hey, you know, what do you look for in that? You know, the more information, the better. You can never have too much information in this. But I think you guys are going along the right, the right avenue to get that. Because, yeah, it's not an easy conversation. Even my clients who have a compensation philosophy, it's not like they live happily ever after, and they never have any marital spats or anything. You know, because the market, the market will always snap at you like an alligator. Issues will come up, financial, operational. I'm right now, just to make a long story short, I'm actually in Omaha right now, dealing with a healthcare client who's making some incredibly hard decisions on the fact that they just can't compete anymore, and they're thinking of basically contracting the whole thing out. I'm not saying you'll ever go there, but sometimes the world takes some swings at you. And this is why it's good to have a philosophy, have a strategy, especially you guys who are in the service business, where you need people to do things, and you need to have the right people with the right skills and not turnover. So, I think everything you're doing is absolutely spot on.
Peter, I just want to say thank you for staying with us on a three-hour and 21 or whatever minute city council meeting. So, definitely appreciate you sticking with us, first off. And second off, thanks for all of your help and kind of hand-holding on my part, I guess. You held my hand as we walked through this, so I definitely appreciate that. And again, appreciate that you spent three and a half hours with us.
That's what I'm here for, and don't worry, I will not charge you for the Snickers. Don't worry about it.
Who got the Snickers?
I'm not telling.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Dennis, any final words before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, cool.
Isams Karies?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
With excitement.
Me, too. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, folks. Good night.